Good evening. It is Monday, April 24th at 7:00 PM, and I welcome you to the Maple Plain City Council Meeting. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Looking for a motion to adopt tonight's agenda?
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Ayes have it, five to zero. The first item of business this evening is a presentation from our Hennepin County Commissioner, Kevin Anderson, so I invite you to the podium and we'll turn it over to you.
Thank you so much, Madam Mayor and Council. It's so nice to be here today. My name's Kevin Anderson. For those I haven't met yet, I was elected in 2020 and kind of started over the last two years and a few months. It's been quite an honor to be able to serve District Seven, the western part of Hennepin This first slide and if it's all of this...
I'm getting a little...
Better? Are we all right on the sound now?
Is that better?
Better?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I want to make sure, yeah, I know. Want to make sure everybody can hear me. So the first slide has some of my positions at the county. I'm the Chair of Public Works and the Vice Chair of Health and Human Services. I also serve on the Audit Committee and a number of other associations with the Transportation Committee for the Association of Minnesota Counties and the Health Policy Steering Committee for the National Association of Counties. I am also active in the community and have some other information, so. Moving on, some of the, tonight I'm planning on just kind of overviewing some of the key priority areas that I've had over the last two years and the progress that I've made in the last year as well as kind of laying out some of what I hope to do and accomplish and continue working on over the next few years. When I was elected, my main goals were infrastructure investment, focusing on mental health services, and making sure that we're engaged with the community and trying to kind of bring more presence of Hennepin County out into District Seven. We can continue on here. One of the infrastructure successes that we've really had has been broadband expansion. In the last two years, thankfully, Hennepin County had an infusion of cash from the ARP funding, and we've allocated $10 million to broadband expansion. We haven't spent all of that yet, but we've tried to partner with a number of cities in western Hennepin, and to date, we've connected over 2,000 homes in western Hennepin that were previously unserved by broadband. This is a big step forward in the right direction, and we intend to continue working with communities. We have partnership opportunities, so if there's unserved areas here in Maple Plain, we would love to work with you to try to make sure that every resident has access to affordable, reliable broadband. We can continue on. One of the big wins that I had last year, we know that infrastructure projects can take a long time, and the 610 completion project in Maple Grove was no different. It was a project 50 years in the making, and by building some collaboration with my colleagues on the board, we were able to secure funding and bring Hennepin County to the table to close the last bit of funding needed to make sure that we had got all the federal match dollars that were available to it, and that project is anticipated to be completed in the next few years. This will connect 610 to County Road 30, kind of across 94, and provide better access to the western suburbs and the northern suburbs. We can continue on here. Another thing that I've been really thankful to be able to be a part of is a number of the community outreach and these successful projects that have been completed already. Kind of the background of this was giving remarks at 92, the completion of that project over 12. It was great to be there. Mr. Crowell, thank you so much for being there. I know that you were a big part in making sure that safety was a leading priority in getting that project done, so thanks for your advocacy and work on getting that project done. I was honored to be there. Hennepin County is also involved in a number of other things that I've had the privilege of being a part of, including our Productive Day Program that takes incarcerated individuals and teaches them job skills and puts them to work. We've utilized that program with some construction programs and projects, as well as planting trees. We have a goal in Hennepin County to plant a million trees over the next few years, and we are making good progress on that. Part of that is going to be looking for ways of partnering with cities, so if you're looking for ways of cataloging and keeping track of trees that are planted in your community, we have an app that can help manage tree infrastructure. And then along county roads, we're looking for ways of making sure that we can plant and maintain trees, so. We can continue on. Another issue that has been near and dear to my heart is veterans' work. My first year on the board, I proposed to build a veterans' memorial in Hennepin County, which apparently we didn't have. That was approved. Progress is happening, and hopefully we'll have some, the design and build phase coming up very soon on the Hennepin County property, so. Another part that in my veterans' work last year was focused on veterans' mental health. We know that veterans are at particular risk for committing suicide, and we lose too many veterans every day to suicide. And so my goal has been to try to bring together organizations, veterans organizations, support organizations, and advocacy groups, as well as the government, like the Federal BA, Men BA, to try to simplify the process for veterans who need help so that they can get help quickly. And I know that with the 988, the three-digit number to access if you're in a mental health crisis, if a veteran is experiencing a mental health crisis, they can hit 988 and then press one and be connected to a veteran-specific support. So I want to put that out there, so anybody who might know of somebody, please let them know that there's help. We can continue on. Last year, I also convened several mental health roundtables. These roundtable discussions were in large part focused on school-based mental health. Our children are also facing a crisis in schools, particularly young women. And I wanted to bring together parents and students who have lived experiences, educators and people in schools, our first responders, who are often on the front line of dealing with people in crisis, as well as mental health professionals themselves, who are oftentimes the, you know, the end solution for so many people. This all culminated in Public Town Hall, which was fairly well-attended. My hope is that we can take some of the lessons learned from that and make the process for anybody who is, any child who is experiencing a mental health crisis, to be able to get help quickly and easily and connected to services where they need them, which oftentimes is in schools. Hennepin County has partnered with every school district in Hennepin County, as well as the mental health providers, to make sure that there's school-based mental health available in every school, every public school in Hennepin County. It was a big step forward. We're looking at trying to make sure that the, we are expanding that availability or making sure that it's at least right-sized for every community. Continue on. Another part that Hennepin County works on every year is our U-Sports grant funding. I know Maple Plain had submitted an application that wasn't successful this year, but hopefully in the, in future years, we can work and get a successful bid through. My office stands ready to help with that process if you would like some help. And I know that the Minnesota U-Sports Grant, the organization that kind of administers that program, also has technical assistance, and, you know, we're happy to help be a conduit to try to make sure that we can have as successful applications as possible. In, as far as Maple Plain, I know that there's continuing talks around the downtown revitalization and the library. I continue to mention this with our administration and facilities so that I keep it top of mind so that hopefully in the next few years, now that we have our library master plan kind of rolled out and we are doing facilities improvements again in Hennepin County for libraries, Maple Plain can be on that list of communities to see some kind of infusion, so. And of course, if there's anything in Maple Plain that I can be of assistance or my office can be of assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out. Happy to be available and a resource to help connect the dots wherever possible. So last year, this is before I open up to questions, you know, every community has faced some really tough budget numbers. Hennepin County, no different. We had, we approved a 3.5% levy increase over our previous levy. That was a percent less than what we had initially approved, the 4.5%, knowing that costs had been rising pretty rapidly. I was kind of glad that we were able to keep things at, to the amount that we were while still making sure that we didn't cut future investments in our roads and bridges and keep moving forward on that. Hopefully, this legislative session sees more transportation dollars coming in so that we can continue doing more projects in western Hennepin. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have for me.
Questions for Commissioner Anderson. Well, I don't have a question, but I would just like to say I thank you for your partnership, and I really appreciate you coming to Northwest Hennepin League and keeping up to date with things that are going on and advocating for our city and as well the work that was done on Highway 12, making it safer for everyone.
Yeah, it's my pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Of course. And again, if you ever have any questions or if questions come up after, please do feel free to reach out to me, and I'm happy to get back to you, so. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Next item of business this evening is Visitors to Be Heard. Are there any visitors to be heard? Okay. All right, we will move on then to the next item of business, our Consent Agenda. The Consent Agenda this evening includes city council meeting minutes, seasonal staff, fire department appointments and hire, resolution ending the state of emergency, and the ARPA resolution. I'm looking for a motion this evening to approve the Consent Agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Moved by Birak.
Second.
Second by Francis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the Consent Agenda, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is Accounts Payable, and I will turn that over to staff.
Thank you, Mayor. I think we've got a fairly straightforward couple of batches here. We had one note, just that the flagship recreation expense for the new swing set is getting reimbursed by their insurance, so that's just kind of a pass-through. I'm happy to answer any questions, anyone? Oh, I will also mention that we, and by that I mean me, missed the Bolton &amp; Make invoices last month, so we have two sets on this month's. And happy to answer any questions on anything.
Any questions for Administrator regarding Accounts Payable? Okay, hearing none. I am looking for a motion to approve the city check batch.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
I'll second that motion.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The next motion is to approve the fire partnership check batch. Looking for a motion.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Francis. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item of business this evening is our staff reports, and it is our quarterly reports, so we are very fortunate to have staff present with us tonight, and we will start with Mark Kaltis, our city planner.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and council members. Nice to be here tonight. The planning report that I prepared for tonight's packet included two months, March and April. Generally, the planning projects that we have ongoing, that we continue to work on our 5370 Highway 12, we continue to get activity related to the redevelopment of that particular building. I've had conversations and several meetings with potential tenants of that space, looking to repurpose a portion of that space for other uses outside of warehousing. I continue to work on the 1701 Baker Park Road subdivision. We've been kind of going around and around. They've had some stormwater challenges associated with that relating to Hennepin County requesting some additional right-of-way in their final plat review, and so we've been working with the applicants in Hennepin County to try to finalize that. I do anticipate that we'll be able to get that finalized and moving forward. Some revised plans just came in at the end of last week. We've got a subdivision request for the property of 4890, so we're doing some review and just work on that particular request. That's going to be coming through to Planning Commission here next month. Outside of that, staff continues to work on the downtown redevelopment, so we've had a series of meetings and continue to work on trying to get that not only schedule aligned, but then the concept plans most recently with kind of the city's vision for that property, so we're hoping to kind of see that come forward here in the next couple of weeks to the city for consideration. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or go into more detail on any parts of the report.
Questions for our planner? All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next we'll hear from West Hennepin Public Safety, our Director of Public Safety, Chief Crails.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor and Council. Included in your packet is the March 2023 Activity Report for West Hennepin Public Safety. Through March, we've handled 967 total calls, and for the month of March, 236 of those were in Independence and 100 were in the City of Independence. I'll highlight a few Maple Plain cases, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask on the other ones mentioned. On March 9th, we responded to a house fire. It was a fourplex in the 5200 block of Manchester Drive. Obviously, Maple Plain Fire was started to that as well. Smoke was coming from the tuck-under garage of that fourplex. Maple Plain Fire was able to gain entry. I believe they, well, I don't want to steal your thunder, Maple Plain Chief 2, but I believe they cut the garage panels open on that, and then they found like just an electrical fire had started in there, so it was lucky it didn't have any oxygen on that. But mutual aid was started, and I'm glad we didn't need them. It was able to be put out pretty easily. On March 13th, 5300 block of Clayton Drive, Maple Plain, we were dispatched to a missing elderly male from that home. He had left his home, obviously having some dementia issues, didn't take his phone, credit cards, or any of his prescriptions. We were dealing with the family members back and forth, and we were very fortunate that at some point in time, one of the family members put a GPS, it's called a Tile. Some of you have seen that, on his keychain of his car, and we were able to track where he was at based upon that Tile. Now, the bad news was this particular brand, in order to get a GPS hit and location, it had to go through his cellphone, through Bluetooth, and since he left his cellphone at home, we were getting very sporadic hits on it. Our investigator worked closely with the family members and the North Dakota State Patrol because he ended up in North Dakota off of 94. What we determined was he was traveling about 45 miles an hour on 94 from Maple Plain to about Jamestown, North Dakota before we located him, but we would get lucky about every 30 minutes, somebody would go by him on 94 that had their Bluetooth activated and had the Tile app on their phone, so when those two would meet, now remember, he's going 45 and everybody else is probably going 75, so we're a very short window there for those two to connect, and then we would get a hit. So it was about every 20, 30 minutes, we'd get a hit. So the North Dakota State Patrol was able to find him, and then they did a really nice job. They transported him back from State Patrol District all the way back into Minnesota and met the family. So it worked out well, and all was well. On March 23rd, we had an arrest, Highway 12 and Baker Park Road, Maple Plain. We've been working a lot of distracted driving in our traffic enforcement. Officer saw that this female was clearly on their phone, initiated a traffic stop and just routine checks and multiple warrants out for arrest. We searched the driver incident to arrest of these warrants, found suspected narcotics, and was arrested for that as well. Pretty typical procedure for us is, you know, if you have a passenger or somebody that can drive your vehicle, which this passenger was in the vehicle, we asked them if they'd like to drive the vehicle instead of having impounded. That passenger said yes, provided us a fake name and date of birth in that process, which we were able to figure that out, and that person too had warrants out for their arrest, so that person was arrested as well. So two were taken to Hennepin County Jail. March 25th, we had an arrest in the 5300 block of Highway 12 in Maple Plain, stopped for 46 in the 30. This particular driver, 23 years old, had so many prior DWI arrests that his driver's license was already canceled and nivaled to public safety. He was again arrested for first-degree felony DWI, and he tested a .24. So obviously, this person has a drinking and driving issue when you're 23 and you're already getting the felony DWI violation, so we were able to get that person arrested and taken to jail as well. Then the last one I'm going to talk about is on March 26th. I think our officers did a really good job in the 4800 block of Highway 12 in Maple Plain. This particular male was very intoxicated, making suicidal statements, didn't want to live. The officer spent a considerable amount of time of de-escalating this person to go on an emergency health and welfare hold. He didn't want to go. It even got to the point where the officers took about 30 to 40 minutes of just talking to him, de-escalating him, even to the point that we walked on the shoulder of the highway with him from Baker Park Road all the way to Bud Street, with another officer providing traffic security, if you would, and that, so they didn't get hit. And after that quarter-mile walk, he was able to come to an agreement and cooperate with officers. Really puts us in a difficult position these days with the, trying to de-escalate the best we can, but at that particular time, this person was not going willingly, and we have placed multiple emergency holds on this person over the years. So the officer did a really nice job on that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions with the Activity Report. Couple things just highlighting for the community and for council. Citizens Academy, our police academy, started on April 6th, I believe. Graduation should have went out to all of you for May 25th graduation. We're really excited about the group we have. They're doing a tremendous job. These 13 individuals are really motivated, and our officers really love teaching the class. Obviously, we've been watching the weather like all of us have with the flooding. In our community, Cadrillo 92, between the Minatrista and Independence border near Lindell is underwater. It's been underwater, and it will be probably for at least another week, depending on what, how the weather is coming up. And then lastly, obviously, the death of Pope County Deputy Josh Owens on April 15th was hit hard for the law enforcement community and all Minnesotans. Our officers were able to attend the, three of our officers were able to attend the funeral on Saturday, and that was a great representation by law enforcement throughout Minnesota. Unfortunately, I have to report that that is the seventh police officer in Minnesota shot so far in 2023, and at some point, this just needs to stop, and law and order needs to get back to where it needs to be, so. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Questions for the chief?
I'd just like to say, chief, when I did my ride-along, the officer I was with did a de-escalation of someone in crisis, and I was beyond impressed. The time he took with that person, I learned a lot sitting there, observing, and you guys are amazing at your jobs.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for all your service.
Thank you.
And just kudos to you and all your staff, and I was asked by at least three different residents on Saturday when I was out and about in the community if West Hennepin was part of the funeral representation and the honor, and people are very proud of that, and thank you for doing that, and our sympathies to all of the peace officers and appreciation for your service.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Next we'll hear from our city engineer, David.
Good evening, Your Honor, members of the council. I'll give kind of an overview of some things that are going on, and then Matt's going to talk in a little more detail about some of the project work that we're doing right now. As you've seen in our report, one of the things that we worked on is we've been putting documentation together and tracking this for a while, but got the documentation submitted to get the INI grant from that council. The work that we claimed was actually related to the 2021 street reconstruction project, but that was in excess of $50,000 that we were able to put in and get that claim, so that was a nice thing to check off the list. I've been working with Clarissa on some transition items, just kind of making sure that our to-do lists are lined up and everything is staying on track related to that. You know, Mark kind of mentioned some of the things that he's working on from a development standpoint. Generally speaking, we kind of provide support to a lot of those same projects and can provide the review and information related to the infrastructure that goes along with that work. Matt will talk a little bit more, and probably Dylan in his report, but we found a sinkhole over a sanitary sewer over north of Industrial Street that we've been taking a look at, and it's kind of related to that surcharge investigation that we've been doing, and so that was kind of a curious find this spring that we're hoping maybe kind of helps us narrow down where some of that clean water is getting into our sanitary sewer system. And from SealCoat project standpoint, the contracts are in process. I think we're just waiting for final signatures on that, and then would expect, once the weather gets more consistently warm, we'll get a pre-construction meeting scheduled and proceed with that work. The sewer lining project started last week. Everything is done along Highway 12. The Baker Park Road section, or the work was started, should be finished tomorrow, so that work is getting wrapped up. We did have one issue along the Highway 12 portion. The western, westernmost stretch of that sanitary sewer, we found that the sewer went along instead of a straight line for manhole, the manhole actually had a bend in it before it went into the last manhole, and it was severe enough of a turn that we weren't able to get a liner in there. So we're investigating what needs to be done there, potentially putting in another manhole on that stretch to make that angle so that we can, one, we would potentially have a small section of new pipe in there, and then we could line the rest of it. So you can expect to get some more updates on that as we figure out what to do next with the... with that. And then with that, I think I'm going to let Matt talk about, again, that INI surcharge. We're putting the water model together, and then just getting a final punch list put together for the Highway 12 water main work from last year.
Thank you, David.
Thank you, Dave. So the INI surcharge, we put out a note in the newsletter, just for people to keep an eye out if they see. We're actually looking for the opposite of ponding is where it's soaking water should pond, and it goes away quickly. So if anybody sees anything like that, please let us know, and that'll help us narrow some stuff down. We did, we got a camera out to look up the sewer line where Dave was talking about for just north of Industrial Street there. We were able to see that there is an issue to fix, but it wasn't enough for us to say we got to get there right now. So we're keeping tabs on that. Two weeks ago, we got the five flow meters out in town. So, you know, I thought we were going to pull them last week, but it was just too busy. So we're going to get those, get the data pulled on those here soon, and then see if we can kind of narrow down which parts of town are having the biggest fluctuations. And hopefully, that helps us find where the issue is. Hopefully, it's one issue, but we'll see. And then as far as the water model, we did get all the flow testing. So the above-ground flow testing with the hydrants, that was done about two weeks ago, and we're getting pretty close on the model being done. We're going to get together internally in about two weeks, and then you guys should see a report on that at the next meeting. Any other questions?
Questions for Matt or Dave? Thank you. Thanks for the update. Next, we'll hear from our fire department, and I believe Sergeant Dennison is here in his police uniform as chief too. Okay, welcome.
Honorable mayor, council, thank you for having me. Rick Dennison, deputy chief of the fire department. I believe that you have in your packet our statistical information also. Sounds like we're hiring Director Krails as our PIO tonight. But a couple of things that we'll go through in here. You have along, again, the fire chief's report. Couple of things we want to talk about. Again, the garage fire over on Manchester, I think, was talked about, very lucky and successful extinguishment of that fire there. Certainly could have been worse with that fourplex building. The other one that was in there that I wanted to highlight was one of the many snowstorms. On the 31st of March, we had a report that a house was potentially struck by lightning. I think it was one of those thunder snowstorms that we had. And went to that house in Independence, and they had something that rattled the house fairly well, knocked creatures off of the wall. They had some smoke come from some outlets. So apparently, it was a surge of electricity that was there. But once the fire department got there and we did an investigation, there was no extension that was found or nothing threatening to the building or anything else for us to do. So I think a case of good fortune for that also. One person, one applicant that we've had on the fire department, we've been working through the application process, and I think thankfully, you guys have approved him tonight to get started. And he is now at training, and that's Adam Rubin, lives over on West Main Street, just west of Holborn Road in the neighborhood, right over there, kind of by Rainbow Park. Awesome guy, has lived over there for a few years now, and are really excited to have him on the fire department. So he's been anxiously awaiting this appointment. So I'm glad that's happened. So training for the month, a few of the things that we've done for training at the fire department is some firefighter survival. Some, last week, we did the first in the two-part series of active shooter response. So firefighters being exposed to what their duties would be if we had some sort of workplace or school environment active shooter and what their role would be. The first night was classroom portion, and the second night will be coming up towards the end of May, where police and fire will get together and actively train and actually do the hands-on portion of going into a building and doing some patient extrication and rapid removal of those folks. So they'll be coming up the end of May. And then just some other medical scenario training and radio training that we've done through the month. So that's kind of where we've been at for our training. I think that's about it. Seventy-nine calls through the year, 29 of those have been in the month of March. I think we have had 10 of them in the city of Independence and 19 in the city of Maple Plain so far. So other than that, I would stand for questions if anybody has any.
I don't have questions, but I would like to congratulate and acknowledge on behalf of the council and all of the firefighters who were recognized at the awards night. And there's way too many to name. So we appreciate all of you, and especially this month, it sounds like you're preparing for the worst, and that's not always easy to do.
For sure.
We appreciate everything that you guys do, and just as well, thank you for the invitation to celebrate, and thank you all, and congratulations on all the awards and years of service. And like I said, we don't have time tonight to name everyone, but it was a beautiful night and well-deserved.
Well, and it was. And it was so nice to be able to get back together and to have that celebration again. We practiced that in the past, and of course, got interrupted by the pandemic. And so this awards night was a little bit of catch-up from years past, right, to recognize some of the folks that, over the couple of years that we weren't able to get together and to see those and to award them with those honors. And I want you to know how much it means to the firefighters for you all to be there in support of them, and that is such an important part for you folks to be involved in that. And it's so appreciated, so I'm so glad that you could be there. It means a lot, I know, to the firefighters to know that you're standing there with them and behind them.
Thank you. And thank you for wearing double hats tonight.
For sure.
All right.
Thank you very much.
My apologies for not following the agenda. Thank you for being flexible for that. Now we'll go back to Public Works, and we'll hear from Dylan with People Service.
Thank you, honorable mayor and council. For the last quarter, some of the goals that we had for Public Works was just to come up with a plan for Willow and Poplar Ave, the gravel roads on the south end of town, just because they're really low. We haven't really come up with anything, but we kind of have a plan somewhat going to just start on it with a six-inch lift and start raising the road, and for me to do some better maintenance on the culverts and see if we can maybe get any of them replaced if we need to. And then just coming up with emergency response plans, which we have kind of been working on them with Greg, or me and Greg have been working on getting some of that stuff together. And then completing the annual maintenance on the pumps and equipment. And it's a good time of year in the winter with us not doing the snowpalling to get that stuff done. So we got most of that done, minus a few of them that are easier to get to in the summertime just with all the snow. And then continuing valve exercising, which we've been going on and got a good program set up for exercising. We didn't really have one set up before, so. And the road patching from main breaks, that should be something we, I guess, if we get it approved here shortly. So hang up and remove the road restriction signs. We got them put up, and they just came off today, actually. But I just got notified yesterday, hydrant flushing this week. So hopefully tomorrow, I'll have Corbin in town, and we can get them and keep going on the flushing. Work on hydrant maintenance. We got, there's a lot of hydrants in town that didn't have flags. We got all them replaced, and then replaced some gaskets and a few other hydrants. And then straightened all the street and traffic signs in town, and we definitely haven't got to any of that. We need to do all of them, pretty much, it seems like at this point with the winter that we had. And hopefully, we can get to that here after the next couple of weeks of hydrant flushing and pop hole filling. And then for next quarter, working on restoration and cleanup from the harsh winter, just in all the boulevards and all the damage done. And then just getting the parks ready to go, irrigation, bathrooms, tennis courts, ball fields, getting all that opened up. Making sure Veterans Park is good to go for a party in the park. Repainting crosswalks again. Some of the things we want to get done in the spring is getting the park benches installed that we got for the grant last year. We got the pads done, but we didn't, never got them installed by winter. And then just continuing to follow and exceed operational plans as listed in the contract of the city. And continuing INI investigations too. You guys have any questions?
Busy season for you.
Yes, it is.
Any specific questions for Dylan in People Service? Thank you. Next, we will hear from our city administrator regarding administration and finance.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I think Dylan would appreciate, would have the same request you had earlier today about the more hours in the day.
Oh.
I think we all would. So with the city administrator transition, here the last six weeks or so, we've been truly trying to plug away on some of our bigger projects, as well as document more of our processes and sort of, we keep calling it data dump, out of my head into the next person. So lots of tasks. So some of our bigger projects, we wrapped up the utility rate study and implemented that utility rate increase on this last quarter's billing. We were finishing up the re-cutification, and then kind of in tangent with that, we also have the rental inspection program, and then a couple other sort of smaller ordinance changes. MS4 is on the agenda for tonight. We have a couple legal cases that are active, the 5210 Main Street enforcement, as well as the Collision Corner enforcement, which has now turned into a double enforcement. So a lot of time for grant on that and some data requests for the rest of us. Finishing up the audit, we should have a draft of that here in the next couple of days. We're hoping to, and by we, I mean you, present that at the May meeting. And yeah, just kind of miscellaneous. I'm happy to answer any questions, just lots of juggling and trying to share information and figure out what's coming down the pipe.
Lots going on. Any specific questions for our administrator? Thank you for helping with the transition and continuing to juggle.
Happy to assist.
All right. With that, I am looking for a motion to receive our staff reports, letter A through F, and that were written and received in person tonight.
So moved.
Moved by Francis.
Second.
Second by DeLuca. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. All right. We will move on to our next item of business, which is our quarterly financial report, and I'm going to turn that back over to Administrator Heather.
Thank you again, Madam Mayor. I will try and get to the page here, so we've got a visual grant. Do you mind turning down the light for me? I should have taken out another column here. Okay, well, in a quick summary, our revenues are sitting at a whopping 2% of budgeted, and that's because we don't get our taxes, our first tax installation until June. So that will be forthcoming. Our expenses are currently sitting at about 25%. So 25%, there's highs and lows, of course, depending on the department. I'm certainly happy to answer any particular questions about any of the given expenditures. Obviously, our snow removal expenses for this year have been significantly higher than planned and higher than years past, both between the contract and then the unplanned part-time seasonal labor that we ended up hiring. We are kind of low right now on council. However, you will have expenses for the search firm and such that will go on that, so you might end up being a little over this year on that. Administration should be pretty close. You're at 22% now out of, you know, a quarter of the year, so I think you're well on track And there were only a couple of things that really kind of jumped out at me that I meant to look at a little further. So Public Works is a little high, so I wanted to look at that a little bit. Streets is snow, and parks is good. Happy to answer any questions, I guess.
Any questions regarding the quarterly financial report? It's hard at this point, it always seems like. Looking for a motion to receive the quarterly financial report?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Burak.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Right, motion carries five to zero. Next item of business this evening is the MS4 ordinance, and I'm going to turn this back over to Bolton Bank, our city engineer, David. I'll let you take it.
Good evening again. Yeah, so the city has a, it has a permit to operate the storm sewer system within the town. And part of that permitting process is being consistent with the rules and regulations of the state. And so we do things like provide education in our newsletter. We have best management practices, just how we manage our stormwater in town. And for tonight's agenda item specifically is we need to make some code amendments to Section 50 of the city code, which is illicit discharges and connections, to be consistent with those permit requirements. The illicit discharge and connection section, the purpose of that section of your code is to regulate the contribution of pollutants to the municipal separate storm sewer system, which is what MS4 stands for, by stormwater discharges by any user. So how pollutants potentially can be conveyed by our storm sewer system. So this section then prohibits illicit connections and discharges, and it establishes the legal authority that we have to regulate the system. So generally, as you look through the ordinance, the changes that are being made primarily are some definitions that are in the code, and then also adding a couple specific prohibited discharges. So the definitions that are being touched on, one is a common plan of development or sale. And what that means basically is sometimes we run into a development or a project where it involves several parcels of land or one big parcel of land, but from a project standpoint, it might get broken up into separate smaller pieces. What this says basically is, even though you broke it up into smaller pieces that might be under the threshold where some of these requirements might be established, if it's part of a bigger project, these rules apply. So it's setting that definition. We also have a more detailed description of what construction activity means, also some further definition of a legal discharge, and then a better, more detailed definition of what MS4 is. As far as prohibited discharge, a couple of things that were added there, specifically adding pet waste to the code, and then also how we handle salt storage. So in a nutshell, that's kind of what the action for you tonight is. Again, more of it related to how we define some things, and then adding those couple specific things that are prohibited. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any more detailed or specific questions you have related to what's in front of you. Otherwise, it would be our recommendation that we make those changes to be in compliance with the permit requirements.
Any questions for Dave regarding this?
I have a general stormwater question, if I could, if anybody doesn't have any illicit discharge questions.
Any illicit discharge questions? Nope, it's yours.
So we've had a lot of questions about drainage this spring, a lot of flooding, and there are a lot of, there are quite a few properties that don't have existing drainage adjustments in their yards because of when they were developed. Is there anything that residents or cities do to help that along, like kind of after the fact? I mean, we're, you know, 70 years after a house was built. What do people do usually?
You know, I mean, to a certain extent, it can be up to the city as to how aggressively you want to chase some of these things. Generally speaking, the backyard drainage issues are private drainage issues. Now, that's not to say that the city doesn't necessarily have a role in providing some resources or potentially some staff time to just take a look at what's going on and maybe see if a solution is there to be offered. The tricky thing about it, if there aren't easements required and if the puddle's in the middle of the block, how do you convey it to where it needs to go? And sometimes that's just getting neighbors together and seeing if you can come up with a solution. Long story short, what I've seen is more on a case-by-case basis where that complaint or concern comes in, take a look at it, want to determine whether or not this is a public issue or a private issue, and then seek some direction as to what you want to provide for city resources if it is a private issue. Springtime is certainly the worst from a drainage standpoint, when the ground's still thawing out, you're not getting water soaking away. So, you know, the low lying areas, as the frost is coming out of the ground here, you see more puddling and drainage concerns tend to pop up, especially when we had a lot of snow like we did, you know, this past winter and how quickly or slowly that melts factors into that. So it's, the backyard side lot things are tougher to deal with. The other thing I would say is, especially as we look to forge the future reconstruction projects, things like that, if we, it is useful to know where we might have some drainage that isn't working the way we want because there's always the potential to add some infrastructure within the city right of way that even if it ends up being a private solution to improve the drainage, we might be able to provide a public outlet for what the area is. You were looking at the door, I thought someone was coming to get me. They didn't like my answers, but so a long way of saying it's kind of a case-by-case. And I will add though too, is even where there is a public easement, doesn't necessarily mean that it's a public drainage problem. That gives some access and some ability to make some things happen because that, you happen to easement to work with them, but that doesn't necessarily mean that it's automatically the city's issue to deal with.
So for residents, then, they would reach out to City Hall and then staff would direct them? And then if need be, staff would involve?
You know, I mean, a good example of two where you see, not to prolong the conversation, but in a newer development where something's being platted, you'll have standard easements down the lot lines, kind of protect that drainage way. What that does is then if somebody's coming in, they're putting a pad next to their house for a camper or something, they're filling into that, it gives the city some ability to kind of regulate and protect those common drainage ways that everybody shares. When those don't exist, it just kind of makes it a little more difficult to necessarily step in and do something. But my simplistic, the attorney's not here tonight, so my simplistic view of drainage law is we all have kind of the responsibility to take the water that naturally comes to us, and we all have the right to get rid of that water along its natural course. So that's kind of been a real general sense, how we kind of at least start by evaluating those.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so with that, back to the illicit discharges and connections. We do have a motion before us tonight to approve an ordinance number 321, an ordinance amending Maple Plain City Code, section 50, regulating illicit discharge and connections. Looking for that motion.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Fay. Any further discussion or questions regarding that? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you for that. All right. Next, we'll move on to city administrator transition items. And do you want to say anything, Clarissa, or do you want me just to start? Me? Okay, awesome. So as everyone knows, our city administrator has resigned, and we have been working on that transition, and she's been very gracious, Clarissa, in helping us with that, so we're super appreciative. Sitting next to her tonight is Shirley Slater Schulte, and hopefully soon, we will approve her contract to come and serve as our intern, beginning this week and next week. We'll be here for the transition, and as Clarissa calls it, the data dump. And just getting Shirley familiar with the city, we did interview three candidates, and we're just thrilled to have Shirley here to help us through this transition and looking forward to partnering with you for that. And then as well, we interviewed three firms. Council's been very busy, I think we had five extra meetings with interviews and planning, so I'm just trying to do our diligence. We will be for you tonight in the packet as well as a contract from DDA, David Drownin Association Associates, and they will walk us through and do all of the work and the background checks of helping us to find the next city administrator for Maple Plain. But throughout that process, Shirley will be here in the intern role and then to help transition the new administrator as well. Our goal is to hopefully have someone in place by August. It's not a quick turnaround, it's not something you want to rush, you want to make sure you get a good candidate who's going to be a good fit for our community and our residents and the staff. So that's kind of where we're at with the transition. Council, anything else to add or I might be forgetting? Okay. So with that, we have three motions regarding to this. So the first motion is to approve the interim city administrator contract with Shirley Slater Schulte.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Fay.
Second to that motion.
Second by Birak. Any further discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. The next motion is to approve a contract for the search firm services with David Drownin Associates.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca.
Second.
Second by Francis. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Oh, I forgot to mention, as part of this process and getting ready, one of that was updating the job description, so that's in here as well too. And we do need a motion to approve the new city administrator updated job description.
Madam Mayor, would you like me to just note the changes that were discussed in the workshop?
I think that would be a great idea.
Okay, so we had in there regarding meetings, and I don't have it open right here. The Fire Relief Association, we're going to remove that as meetings to attend. And then there was a paragraph regarding communications, and so we're just going to start that kind of communications and presentation paragraph with, in partnership with the city council. And then apparently, the city administrator does not need to drive a school bus, so we're just going to make it a valid Minnesota driver's license instead of a Class C.
We don't need any more restrictions or challenges. All right, thank you for noting those changes. All right, so with the three changes noted, looking for a motion to approve the job description.
So moved.
Moved by Francis. Second by Birak. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. Our next item of business this evening is our Public Works capital purchases, and I am not sure where Dylan went, so do you want to walk us?
Dylan had an emergency water main break. There you go.
That's us.
John, are you planting a tree or something?
It's not been a good year for water main breaks in Maple Plain.
It's not a water main break, it's just illicit discharge.
There are the people pumping the backyards.
So I will try and muddle through this a little bit. So the first item that we are requesting for replacement is the skid loader. We had presented to council a couple months ago the idea of getting a tool cat instead of a skid loader for a number of reasons. Largely, I like it because it adds efficiency and safety. You're not climbing in and out of a skid loader, under and above buckets. It's right out the side, so it's just a lot more efficient and a lot safer. It has similar lifting capacity, not quite as good as a skid loader, but we do have the larger tractor four that we can use for that. We had discussed the possibility of being able to attach a mower to this and use it on some of the larger fields. Dylan and I both spoke with a number of users, and they have strongly recommended against that, that we just wouldn't get a very good quality mow and that it would be very inefficient to go around trees. So if we had golf course and rough mower, rough mowing stuff that we needed to do, maybe, but not for our uses. Dylan has obtained a quote that I completely missed putting in the agenda for tonight, but we got a quote for a mower from the local company out here on the highway. Tricay, thank you. And so he'll bring that back for presentation and hopefully get a couple other quotes for that. Now, the mower is still, it's got high hours, but it's still running well, so it's not quite as urgent. Replacing the skid loader is a little more urgent because of the time that it takes to actually order these and the fact that we really need a reliable machine for snow removal. So we obviously had a lot of snow this year, the skid loader was down for a few days. I think the skid loader and the tractor were both down at the same time, we kind of had equipment dropping like flies. So we really need to make sure we have a reliable machine there. The cost is significant, $63,000, and that includes trading in our current skid loader. However, our current skid loader is over 25 years old, so I did a kind of a lifespan budget for 15 years. That would make an annual cost of just over $4,000 per year. Any questions on that? And seeing that we don't have our main user in the room, certainly.
More of a question or a comment going forward. So we're as many as eight months out on this new tool cat, and we've got a trade-in value of our current skid loader, which in the narrative is in need of a lot of repairs. And so if we're going to be using the skid loader for as many as eight months and putting repairs into it and fixing the things that need to get fixed, are we in fact increasing the value of its trade-in eight months on down the line, or?
I don't know that we're doing a lot of repairs to it between now and when we get rid of it. We essentially, when they looked at it this winter, I think the comment was pretty much any seal that could leak was leaking, and they fixed the worst of those to kind of help us muddle through. But then the rest, it just wasn't worth improving.
I just don't want to find ourselves putting $10,000 worth of work into it between now and December only to trade it in for $8,500.
Right, yeah.
Okay.
Any other questions regarding the tool cat? Okay, so with that then, I'm looking for a motion to approve the quote from Lano Equipment to purchase a tool cat in the amount of $63,394.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Birak.
Second.
Second by Francis. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Yep. So the next item was an upgrade to our SCADA system. Total Control Systems is the company that sort of manages that system for us. The last time the computer was replaced, we tracked down the invoices and took a look at those, was around 2017. So if you assume that there's roughly a five-year lifespan on computers, it's about due for replacement or slightly overdue. Dylan did mention, kind of what triggered this all was that the computer system was really bogging down quite a bit, and I believe he said that there was an increased need or we're having to do more reads or download more data for some reason, and so having to do all of that additional processing was kind of what clued him into the fact that the whole thing was sort of bogging down a little bit. And I don't really know anything other than that, so.
I just know it's important.
I was going to say.
It's really non-negotiable.
It's a very, very, very important piece of equipment.
I'm looking for a motion to approve the quote from Total Control Systems for $12,056.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Councilmember Fay.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Francis. Any further discussion or questions? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries five to zero. And then our last recommended action item for that this evening?
We just have some asphalt patching, and just due to the purchasing policy, I thought we'd put it on the agenda quick. We, it's roughly 2,400 square feet of road patching. A lot of it is over on Bryant Wood, a lot of it, that was due to the water main break that occurred over there, and then also just some, kind of the poor condition of that particular street. And I don't have the exact locations of all of these, but no, I don't, my apologies.
And it looks like we received three different quotes.
We received three quotes.
And there's a recommendation.
Yeah.
See more than three?
Is there more than three? Okay, sorry. Oh, yeah, there's five, sorry. Yes, counting's hard. We got all five figures.
See, Clarissa, all five bidders received the same information as far as the map and the square footage and what have you.
I'm going to assume so, Dylan's not here to answer that, but they all, I believe, provided the, or there at least were a few that had the 2,369 square feet.
Okay.
Those are five quotes.
Are you done?
Yes.
I know Dylan had recommended that we choose Ace, excuse me, Weber Multi, being the lowest, but in looking at this and doing a little research, we have as a group a fiduciary responsibility to look at the lowest and responsible bid. And when I looked into Ace, they're 30 years of paving experience and paving is in their name and they have a great website. And then I look at Weber, it's, we're talking a $300 difference here now. When I look at Weber, they have a Facebook page, they've got three and a half years of experience, and I can't find where they've done any paving. They, Ace offers a five-year guarantee against potholes, it's right in their bid, and I think if I have to choose one over the other, I think the responsible bid, lowest responsible bid, far as my view, would be to choose the local outfit, Ace Paving, with 30 years of experience versus Weber Multi, I'm sorry, Multi Services, which seems to be an excavation company. And so I'm not going to be able to support choosing Weber as the recommended company to do the paving, apples for apples. I will be voting for Ace.
Are we comfortable? Sorry, go ahead, Congressman, but you can go.
And John, while I appreciate your diligence in that, Weber is a responsible bidder, and I'm compelled to go with the lowest responsible bidder, which would put it at Weber, which apparently is the recommendation from staff.
I would just add, we've worked with Weber on a couple other projects, not paving specifically, so you're right, I'm not sure about their experience there. We do have Weber kind of penciled in from a schedule-wise perspective, but I'm sure Ace could also get us in, it's not like it's a huge project, so. Dylan, I think, was only recommending Weber because he was comfortable with them and because they were the lowest bidder, so either one would be fine.
My concern with not going with Weber tonight would be that Dylan's not here, and he's going to be the primary contact and the one working with them, and since that was his recommendation, I did not, I was not aware of the pothole guarantee though.
It's, the difference in pricing between the two is $5 a square foot regardless, and And the difference between the two is a $1,200 mobilization versus a $1,500. And so we're talking $300. We're talking less than one, one tenth of one percent. And that's fine. I, I will not be making a motion to accept Weber.
Thank you for your research and sharing. All right, so staff has presented the bids and is proposing a motion to go ahead with Weber Multi Services for road patching. Looking for that motion.
So moved.
Moved by DeLuca. Is there a second? All seconded. All in favor of Weber Multi Services? Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. I heard four. Okay, hearing four ayes. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it, four to one for Weber, Weber Multi Services. All right. Our next item of business this evening is council reports and other business. Do you want to kick us off, Councilmember Birak?
Sure. I'm going to be attending the police commission tomorrow morning. Working with the watershed district, it was great to know the value that they are putting on preserving some of our natural resources around the area. And I am one of the people in the police academy.
I'm glad to hear you're going to graduate. I was really concerned.
Assistant's academy, whatever it is.
You said all 13 were doing well, so we don't need to be worried.
Yeah.
All right.
I only missed a few.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember DeLuca?
I attended earlier in the month, the West Hennepin, or our fire department awards ceremony over at Independence. And I, I just think, pause for a moment to, to say the camaraderie and the culture of our fire department and our police department, because I think you see a lot of overlap in there, is really touching to me as an elected official. I think it'd be safe to say that any one of those folks would do anything for one of their comrades. And you see that coming out in all that they do. So it was very touching to go to that. A lot of work this month on selecting our interim administrator and welcome Shirley.
Thank you.
A lot of work on hiring of our recruiting firm, which I believe DDA will do a good job for us in locating somebody to attempt to fill the shoes from Clarissa. And I say attempt because they're going to be big shoes to fill. Lot of workshops and Fire Relief did not meet this month as they were waiting for their investment advisors to provide some support, so.
Thank you, Councilmember DeLuca. Councilmember Fay?
Oh. I concur with what Councilmember DeLuca said. We had multiple workshops, planning for administrator, administrator transition, including interviews and selection processes and stuff like that. I think you mentioned earlier, it was a total of maybe five workshops. It's been a busy month. I attended the fire department recognition night. As, as was mentioned earlier, it's nice to see it back in place after a multi-year absence. I want to think it was clear back to 2019, the last time we had a recognition night. Attended the local board review, Orno Rotary on Thursdays. We did a, if you drive from 92 to 90 on Highway 6, you will see a spotless ditch. On both the north and westbound side, plenty of aluminum, plenty of, plenty of plastic. Finance meeting a couple of weeks ago, as well as another one tomorrow, as well as tonight's business meeting. Oh, and I'll get to this in a minute, yeah.
Are you done?
Yeah.
Okay. I too attended all the workshops, finance committee, experienced my first equalization board meeting. Taxes bore me to no end. And I'm an accountant, I like numbers, but.
Sit at the numbers lady.
But taxes, rather watch grass grow and paint dry. Also attended the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce and our speaker was talking about getting in and retaining millennials and Gen Z people. That they, those generations no longer plan on working somewhere for 30, 40 years like older generations and how do we keep a workforce intact? It was very interesting.
And they also challenged us to consider on, consider the remote work from home option as well. I was at that same meeting, sorry.
Right, yeah. Yeah, and, and with the pandemic coming out of that is, a lot of people can work from home and how does that look for your office? You know, for me, I personally, I work from home four out of five days, sometimes all five days. And it's been awesome because my employer's in New York City, so I was working somewhat remote already. But a lot of our workforce and my current job is the younger generation and everything the speaker said about them is true. They stay for about two, three years and they're on to something else and not even necessarily related to what they had been doing. So it's something we need to really look at as far as even working with city councils and committees of getting younger people more involved in what that looks like.
All right, thank you. Any other?
Nothing else.
Did you have something else to add in?
No.
Okay. Oh, okay. As everyone has said, it's been a busy month, so thank you for your dedication and the teamwork. I appreciate everyone coming to meetings, reading the packets, being prepared and the open dialogue. And I do not take that for granted when I hear of some of the things that are going on in neighboring cities with councils, so. I was able to attend the brunch with the Easter Bunny at Haven Homes. It was just a fun event where I got to shake hands and smile with the Easter Bunny and visit with the residents. And it was just nice in the middle of the snowstorm to be inside a warm building with very happy people who did not need to go outside. Was able to attend the regional council and mayor's meeting and the focus. There was a forum on public safety and it was very intriguing and lots of concerning trends in our society. So was able to attend the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce as well with the asset HR. And it was some good things and some things to think about. Also, the chamber hosted a Mocha Morning Mixer on Wednesday and we had 28 people here just sharing business cards and networking. So again, it's the first one we've done since pre-pandemic, so that was great. We're hoping to bring those back quarterly, moving around to different businesses, different times around the city. So good to be feeling a little bit back to normal and connected with people. Was able to attend the Northwest Hennepin League of Municipalities and Sheriff Witt was our speaker and our focus was really on partnering with the suburban cities and what we're going to do for juveniles, which was a theme throughout the month. A lot of the meetings I was at this month were very public safety focused, in particular partnering with our chiefs out here and coming up with services, in particular for our juvenile youth as we currently are not servicing them while in our own county. Was able to attend the, oh, sorry, I lost my spot. We had an Orno Healthy Youth Meeting and that really worked on summer planning and programs for children and youth. And just a reminder that Rainbow Park hosts one of those great programs, so we're excited about that. They will be hosting a Wellness Expo and an Empty Bowls Event on May 9th from 5:00 to 7:00 in the Activity Center. And come on out for free ice cream and lots of different activities. And there'll be a focus on mental health and summer programming and just an opportunity for all the service agencies to be in one spot at the same time. So we're looking forward to that. Was able to attend the Download Chamber of Commerce as their guest for their state of the city and as the West Hennepin Chamber of Commerce Vice President. I shared a little bit last month, but there is talk of developing an umbrella chamber along the Highway 12 corridor. So did that. Had coffee with Commissioner Lundee. We served together on the Criminal Justice Coordinating Committee. And again, it was really just about the lack of resources and what we're going to do. So at some point, I hope we can quit talking and finally do something. The message is out there. So want people to save the date for Party in the Park, June 3rd from 5:00 to 11:00. Our spring cleanup is May 20th. And then also, we are looking for volunteers to help plant trees on May 18th and 20th. Reach out to City Hall if you're interested in that. Was able to go to the Metro Cities Meeting and heard our state demographer. It's the second time I've heard her speak this year and it just gives you a lot to think about with the job shortage and the workforce shortage. And there's so many things leading into that and it's not just COVID and it's not just people not wanting to work and how we're all needing to flex, get flexible, get creative and just trying to retain employees. So it's been a busy month as everyone has shared just lots of good things going on and really appreciate that. So anything else from council, the council reports?
I just wanted to say I won't be here next week and so therefore I will not be here on your final day. And I just wanted to say that, wanted to thank you. I was drawn to something you said a few months back and that was to concentrate on the things that you've accomplished and not the things that you have yet to accomplish. And you've accomplished a lot. In the last two and a half years, Maple Plain is in a better place than they were two and a half years ago. You've developed processes and procedures, most of which never existed before. They're in place, whether they be accounting or financial or personnel or CIPs, they're in place so that they can reduce the amount of time necessary to, to run monthly or annual They're repeatable. We're in the process of cross-training. And I hope your spreadsheets are user-friendly.
That's on the user.
So for all that, Clarissa, I say thank you.
You're welcome. Well, and Councilmember Fay, thanks for stealing my thunder. So I'm going to say ditto. Yeah, I was supposed to say all of that. But I think you covered everything. I didn't write my speech on behalf of all of us, but it was well said, so ditto. And you know, plants die. You don't really live in Maple Plain, so we thought it would be very appropriate to present you with a plaque that says, everybody is not in the budget. And we do really appreciate everything you have done and the policies and the procedures. And hopefully you will smile and think of the happy memories when you see this. And then all of your elected officials have signed the back and we'll get the other two to add it.
Thank you. That's perfect.
John, I thought I was going to cry or not be able to keep it all together, so. Well, once you started, you didn't come up for air. I was like, all right, just kicking you sideways.
He's getting in touch with the skills and everything.
I'm like holding the lap on my lap, like, it's okay. I just got to give you a hard time. So with that, I am, you're good?
Can I, can I, just real quick?
Yes, you may.
I got my, my.
Since it's her last meeting, we'll give her the mic.
Super mini-speech, since it's my last meeting, I do want to just thank the council for the opportunity. We've had a lot of fun challenges. I am a glutton for punishment and, and love a good challenge, so that has been well fulfilled here in Maple Plain. And I do, I think that we've accomplished a lot and, and obviously some, some similar thought processes and getting to know each other's different personalities and people that love numbers and budgets as much as I do. Thanks, John. And just a huge, huge thank you to all of our staff. We have some brilliant and caring, dang it, I'm a crier. And everybody just puts up with all of my stupid questions and curiosity and random ideas. Mark, for the most part, gets all the, gets all the random ideas. Dylan, for all of my stinginess with the budget. So thank you, everyone. It's just been great serving with all of you.
Well, thank you and wish you all the best and good luck. And we do appreciate you leaving us better than how you found us.
Thanks.
All right, with that, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Francis?
I'll second the motion.
Second by Birak, all in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. The meeting's adjourned at 8:25.